I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May this aspirant, all others present? All right, Amy submitted her board report, so I will read that. Governor and the Department of Workforce Development announced a $1 million in grant funding for teacher training and recruitment. Governor Tony Evers, together with the DWD today, announced $1 million in grants available to train and recruit teachers in severe shortage areas. The Department of Public Instruction 2025 to 2027 biennial budget request would increase the special education reimbursement rate to 90% by fiscal year 27, provide meaningful per pupil adjustments to revenue limits, limit property tax increases, index revenue limits to inflation for the first time in 15 years, expand the per pupil categorical aid program, and fund several grant programs. This is the DPI budget request, so we'll have to stay tuned to that. This fall, election voters in three states had the chance to weigh in on their state's school choice voucher systems, and voters in Colorado, Nebraska, and Kentucky all voted against private school vouchers. While the three states were all debating private school vouchers, they differed in their approaches to the programs. So we're not the only ones struggling with that, but it sounds like some states are taking some actions, so that's positive. School districts across Wisconsin went to the polls November 5th to vote on 138 referendum questions in 121 districts. Election results indicate that 108 of the 138 school referendums on the November ballot were approved, and that translates to a passage rate of slightly over 78%. The results of the November 5th are at the federal level, the GOP won the presidency, senate, and the house. At the state level, elections held and redrawn legislative districts resulted in reducing the GOP margins in both senate and assembly. They still retain control of both chambers with the margins at 18 GOP, 15 Dem in senate, and 54 GOP, 45 Dem in the assembly. And of course, we still have Assembly kitchens as our representative. She says it. Locally, 12 kitchens won reelection in the Assembly District 1. Tony Weed won election in Congressional District 8, and Tammy Baldwin retained her seat in the US senate. Legislative Study Committee on Emergency Detention and Civil Commitment of Minors heard testimony and recommendations aimed to address the youth mental health crisis in the state. DPI announced in their budget proposal to support developing readers and implement mandated early literacy initiatives in the next biennium. The request totaling approximately $42 million would be in addition to the nearly $50 million that is still tied up with the Joint Finance Committee, which has not been in session since April of 2024. And DPI has proposed, Dr. Joe Underley has proposed $59.5 million in new investments aimed at recruiting and retaining Wisconsin educators, supporting future educators by providing a $10,000 stipend for all student teachers, plus $3,000 for cooperating teachers. And then finally, the DPI has proposed $294 million for universal free meal program to offset costs to students and families for meals received while at school, both breakfast and lunch. Again, all these DPI budget proposals still have to be approved, so they're likely to change. All right, it was a busy legislative time. All right, moving on, Board CISA report, Chris.
CISA 7 again had a jam packed October. They had 24 of the superintendents at the PAC meeting, big updates from WASDA, WASPA, and their legal update. The next meeting, they're having a focus with the legislative representatives because there is a plus or minus nine different people that will be representing the different districts in CISA 7. Colleen commented about a seminar she was at for Leader in Me. They were touring different schools in Iowa and Wisconsin, as we know, is doing a really great job with youth apprenticeship, academic and career planning, definitely making, developing our students as leaders and making kids a partner in their education. Colleen also talked about a conference she had just been to, and Arthur Brooks was there, and it just saw some pretty cool info for you guys. The data from his Harvard research shows we are the happiest at 16, age 16, and the unhappiest at age 53. If your career makes you happy, then your happiness actually decreases when you retire. And it talked about faith, family, friends, and purpose versus fame and fortune or popularity. So if you want to look at that, Arthur Brooks, Harvard studies. Dave, you have some of the happiest times of people's lives in this building, so. CISA 7 building update, it's moving along. December, we will be back in person. All the fixtures I've seen, it's awesome. It's LVP flooring in the bathrooms, in the ceiling, in the lighting, and it looks so nice. Parking lot should be done, so make sure to take a little run around the building if you get there before the end of the year here. Their directors presented a superintendent evaluation instrument, which was near and dear to my heart, as we are knee deep in that this month. CISA realizes there's a few tools out there, but some of them are not as user friendly or don't collect the data in the way that they want to, so they created a self appraisal and then a Google Doc, Google Form, that goes out to the people who need to fill it out, and it combines it all and dumps it into a spreadsheet, and then it averages everyone's scores and gives you a nice, pretty report out. It is in the $2,000 to $2,500 range, but they did express that it is the only evaluation of performance that is public record, so it's nice to have that look really professional and everything. So that's something new that they're going to be rolling out. They talked about the E-Rate updates for internet discounts and Wi-Fi on the buses. I'm assuming Amber is all filled in on all of that fun stuff. I don't know if you guys have been notified for the convention in January, but the Hilton is being renovated, and there's a limited number of rooms, so some people's reservations will be canceled or moved, so you will be notified.
Wow.
We did update some job descriptions. They have a newish HR manager at CISA 7, and he's doing a really cool job at making sure things are updated and consistent and really taking care of the business office. And we will need that if you did not read the CISA 7 update. Dr. Tim has announced her retirement, so we all had some tears the last couple meetings. So recruiting firms are coming in in December for the Board of Control to select one that will support us as we do that search. And we are tabling Title IX updates until February to see what happens with the new president, so. That is all I have. Busy times.
Yeah, I see what you guys do. Well, it'd be interesting to see what that evaluation is. The WASPA also has something new online as well, so there'll be some additional options.
Yeah, and I looked that up while we were talking about it. The CISA price point is higher, but CISA's also comes with some coaching to the raiders and then feedback to the superintendent, so, which they don't have that at the other ones, so.
Right. Yeah, yeah, well, that'll be interesting to look at for possibilities. All right, it does not look like we have a student.
She was out sick today.
Okay. I don't have any misconceptions or rumors. Nobody's here to sign and speak. The only announcement I have is I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and hope everyone has some good times with family and friends and some relaxation and time to reflect on the blessings that we have. Moving on, administration reports.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll start with our finance update by Amber.
Nice and short this month. We are well within our target ranges for this point in the year. We have received approximately $15,000 in interest earnings in October. These numbers are going to start to drop a little bit. The feds have dropped the interest rate by two quarters of a percent over the last month and a half, so. We did get our first USDA food reimbursement in October as well. Next month, you're going to start to see these numbers start climbing. We did our first round of WISE grants reimbursements in November, so. Under expenditures, we did have a little bit of a learning curve. The keys to literacy training previously was covered under Title II grant funds, and this year we found out that it cannot be covered by Title II. That is a result of the Act 20. There's some supplanting language that was included in Act 20, so we had to revamp our budget in WISE grants before they would approve it for us to submit reimbursements. We're still waiting on their approval. But we did get that all straightened out, and it's only going to move about $1,900 over to our regular training budget, and I think we have plenty in there for that. I don't think it's going to cause any concerns, so. And then just an update for the board, so you know what we're doing in the business office. Every month, I send out budget reports to the admin team to give them an idea of where they're at, and then we have meetings scheduled on the books to meet if they have any concerns or things we need to talk about, and if there's nothing you want to discuss, we just cancel the meeting, so. We've been doing that. And then our other funds, not a whole lot of activity here. The auxiliary gym floor has now been completed. The new moor was purchased and received. The enclosed cargo utility trailer has been ordered. Did we get it yet?
We are about two weeks out from getting it.
And then for referendum projects, we did have a payment to McKinstry in September. The next payment actually went on at the very beginning of October, so there's no payments in October. And Bayland has not requested any reimbursement or payments yet. They're on track to have the bids out. Jesse's going to give you an update a little bit on that, so we're looking good here. And then our last update for financials is on the referendum projects. We had about $16,500 in interest earnings. So with Bayland moving just a little bit slower than we originally had anticipated, I actually bought three more CDs, a three-month, six-month, and nine-month to lock in those rates to get those interest earnings a little bit longer and higher than we would sitting in the savings account, so. That's all we got for financials.
Questions for Amber? All right. I know we just wrapped up the fall election, but we have to start looking ahead to the spring election, which encompasses school board. And so our notice to the public was published on Saturday in the Kiwanis Star. Good news is we can use them now for any legal updates. They were certified over the summer to be a legal notice, so that's what our board policy states, that we can use them, so we'll continue to stick with them rather than putting it in the Press Gazette, Green Bay Press Gazette. We have two seats that'll be on the ballot this spring. Both of them are city seats, so anyone that's planning to run for election needs to reside in the city. The deadline for completing the candidacy paperwork opens December 1st and runs through January 7th, closes at 5:00 PM. So that's in the district office. Anyone that's interested in the public would be able to pick up the paperwork there, and we will help fill that out. There's an example of how to fill out the paperwork, so. And then for the two that are up for election would be Chris Schli and Barb Rogers. If you are planning not to rerun, non-candidacy paperwork needs to be completed by December 27th. I have those forms in my office, so you can talk to me separately on that. And then if we have more than five candidates running, we will have to do a primary, and that will be on February 18th, so.
Five for each seat or five total?
Five total, so. All right, referendum updates. So Bayland Buildings, I met with them last Friday. We reviewed the final drawings, so I have those available for you to view whenever you would like to. They're pretty detailed. I was kind of impressed with all the work that was, that went into making sure all the details are there and stuff. Talks about hardware and windows and door frames and all that, so. Bids went out last week on Thursday. Apparently, there's some national or state website that you put bids out there that anyone can apply for, so those are being reviewed. The walkthrough is scheduled for Wednesday. We have no school, so that date works out well, that any contractors that would like to just do a walkthrough, get more information, can come on Wednesday. Jim from Bayland will be here, along with Steve, to walk through both of the buildings. Competitive bids are going to be due then back to Bayland on December 9th. Bayland will go through and review those bids and then present them to us as a district on the 9th through the 11th. And then the final bid results will be, again, looked at us by, on the 11th, and the board will have final approval on Monday, December 16th. At our board meeting, we'll have the bids presented to the entire board for approval. Any questions about this? Okay. Last thing I have is state report cards. Those were released last Tuesday. So we have four areas that make up the scores of our state report cards. The achievements, which is the level of knowledge and skills attained against state academic standards for ELA and for math. The growth, which looks at comparing our students' growth from year to year. The target group outcomes, which is our priority group areas, kind of our student groups, like our EL population, special education population, and looking at how the outcomes, how those students did year after year. And then the last item is on-track graduation rate. So that looks at graduation rate, attendance, those types of things for the high school. Breakdown of the scoring categories, as you can see, are the five different categories. Our school, as a district, fell in the meets expectations at 63.1. The elementary was 62.2. Middle school and high school, 63.5, and the Elgoma Venture Academy was 62.4. I do want to note that the cut scores for this year from DPI did change, so that did drastically impact, I think, some of the ratings that districts are seeing, so it is not comparing apples to apples if you are looking at report card from years to years. They are weighted differently this year because of those cut scores, which impacts the four different priority areas that I discussed. So there's more information on DPI's website around that, so communicating these out is a little more challenging this year for school districts because of that, so. But we will be sending communication out to families in the next couple of weeks, as well as posting in the newspaper our educational options, which is a state requirement to do.
Were we kind of meets expectations in all four of those categories, or are there some that are higher than others in averaging out, like our on-track to graduate might be really good and growth is really high?
Yeah, so they don't rate specifically each one of those categories. They combine them. They're weighted differently by your socioeconomic status, your special education population, so. There's a little pie chart on the front of each of those report cards that kind of shows you the weights.
Is this change from here on going forward now for a while until they decide to? Or is this next year, they're going to flip a coin and go back to it?
No idea.
And is this kind of the norm with every other school district? I mean, is it not kind of released yet?
It is pretty norm, I would say. I would say because of the cut scores, scores definitely went up across the state, so.
Can I add something, Jesse, that I learned that I thought was interesting? Can you go back to the previous slide? So Dave and I, as part of our principals cohort, we did some deep dive into our report card, and one thing that we learned was that if you are a district that has a free and reduced population of less than, it was 35%, then the report card score was heavily weighted on achievement. But if you were a district that had a free and reduced population above 35%, then your report card was heavily weighted on growth. So we would fall into the growth category, which is interesting.
So it's not really set for everybody? It changes?
Yeah, yeah.
Which makes it difficult, if people are looking at different districts.
Correct.
Because all of the different factors.
That's how we're going with this.
The score.
Yeah.
Which is another reason it's difficult to present these and explain them.
Correct.
Because it shows a number, you know, the ultimate output is a number, but the algorithm is totally different depending on each student, each school's makeup.
There's a really interesting document linked on DPI's website about changes to the 22-23 report card compared to other years, so it's a one and a half page document that's kind of goes through the different cut scores and the impacts it makes, so.
What's your feeling about it? Is it an improvement?
It would have been nice to keep the same, I think, so we could compare, especially coming out of COVID, because these are three-year averages that you take for this information, and so now that you throw a wrench into changing the cut scores, it's hard to compare, so.
Wow, yeah, so we have the pandemic and the change in the cut scores, so. Makes it hard to decide what these numbers mean compared to before, okay.
Is there going to be a footnote when you send these out to families that the way these scores changed?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how to word that yet.
I think the scores have changed.
I think we're all, there's superintendents in the area in CISA. We had a meeting at our PAC meeting, actually, how do we go about doing that? So I think we're trying to find some common language that we can use across all districts.
And then all the districts in the area see the same effect?
Yeah. That is all I have.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Moving on to you, Katie.
All right. I'm going to start with an Act 20 update and an ELA curriculum update. As far as Act 20 goes, two updates that we received from DPI. The first one having to do with the diagnostic assessments. They kind of jumped the gun a little bit when they were originally messaging out the steps and the process to us, so they kind of recoiled just a little bit. Initially, we were told that all the students take the screener, and then the students that fell beneath the 25th percentile were administered additional diagnostic tests in the specific categories that they struggled with the most, so that you could kind of narrow it down to where their direct needs are. The switch with that is that we still have to administer the screener. Anyone below the 25th percentile has to take additional diagnostics, but they have to take all of the diagnostics, so not just the ones that they scored lowest in, but all of them. So we'll have to adjust how we do that come winter, when we do our assessments again. It will be a little more timely, time-consuming, but I'm hoping that maybe they adjust that in the future, because it does seem a little bit redundant, and again, time-consuming on what is already a pretty extensive assessment regimen. So that was one update. And then the other update has to do with a promotion policy. So districts are required to have a promotion policy for students moving from third grade to fourth grade. DPI is required to provide districts with a model that they can use and adopt, but districts do not have to adopt that model. I believe they have to adopt a policy that just states what our intentions are for moving students from third to fourth grade, but we are not required to retain students from third to fourth grade for any reason, so. That's about as much as we got so far. More to come on that, I'm sure, as I feel like that could get a little controversial and interesting, so.
Can I just add to that too, Katie? The timing of that is going to be really important. There's a deadline of if you enact the policy before July 1st, you have to provide summer school services to those students identified. If the board adopts the policy after July 1st of '25, you do not have to provide those summer school services this school year. It would carry over to the 2026 then. So I'm waiting for guidance from Neola to come out on that policy, and when that does, I will bring it to the Policy and Practice Committee for review, and then, just as any other policy, we'll do the process that we do, so.
As far as our curriculum adventure goes, we've spent the last few weeks, we did finish our curriculum review, so our Lit team reviewed all of the resources. We narrowed it down to three, and so now the Lit team members have been working with teachers and PLCs after school to really go through everything with a fine-tooth comb, make some comparisons. We have some documentation that we're asking everybody to fill out, just to make sure that everyone has a chance to have their voice heard and really look at things specific to their grade level. We did have materials available at Open House for parents, so we had physical materials. And then what I passed out to you is just one of the handouts that we had available to parents that provides a really quick overview of some of the differences with the three curriculums. They're very much the same with very small nuances in their approaches. We, I have some Lit team members coming next month in December to do a presentation for you, and they'll kind of go through everything, some of the big, big differences and kind of what we're thinking in our, just our whole process, so you'll get to hear from them. But in the meantime, we did schedule two different site visits, so we are going to see, we're going to the Reevesville School District December 9th, and we're going to spend the whole day observing the CKLA reading curriculum. And then on December 18th, we're going to the Rivers School District, and we are going to observe the WIT and Wisdom curriculum. We have had a hard time finding a district that utilizes EL education. The tricky thing about this one is that the DPI-approved publisher is Open Resources, so there's other publishers that publish the same curriculum, but the only one that was approved by the JCPenney Committee was Open Resources. So we're having a hard time finding a district in Wisconsin near us, relatively close, that we could tap into for that. We are interested in WIT and Wisdom because that one goes along with Foundations, which is a phonics program. We already have Foundations, and it also goes along with GOES, which is a set of decodable readers, which we also already use, so that one kind of piques our interest in that sense. And then CKLA is the only one that spans from 4K through, in our case, sixth grade and up to eighth grade, so we want to make sure that we keep that one in the running for sure, so. More to come on that in December, when the Lit team is here to share their findings with you. And then my last, my last item is just more so a save the date. It's going to be here before we know it, but our winter concerts are scheduled for, our 4K through fourth grade are scheduled before the Friday, right before winter break during the day. So 4K and kindergarten are scheduled at 10:00. First and second grade are scheduled at 1:00, and third and fourth grade are scheduled at 1:45 that day. And then grades five through eight, their band and weather concert is Monday, December 16th at 6:30 PM.
Is that a conflict with this meeting for people? And it sounds like December will be busy with the Lit team and the, did you say Bayland's coming in or bid stuff is happening that day too?
I already sent it out to my Lit team members, and I had about four people who, some did have conflicts with the concert, but I did have all four that would be there.
Are we wanting to maybe consider changing the time for me to earlier, maybe a 5:00 start? Would that work for you this time of year? Everybody else?
At least you get to come for a little bit, right? Sure. The Bears play the Vikings that week too. It's important, I mean.
That's.
I already know the outcome of that game, you feel?
Hey, I had to check the Packers' schedule, so that came off anyway.
It's a sick game.
Yeah.
All right, so we will change the December sixteenth meeting to five P.M.
Katie, you have a lot of visitors for PT conferences when they were?
Not an overwhelming amount. We actually started in the Commons, and then after about fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, we decided to move our tables up to the hallway. And that helped a little bit, people definitely stopped a little bit more, but it wouldn't stay. What was that?
She moved them down to the library.
I know, we had thought of that too.
I totally forgot about it, all of a sudden I got home and.
I know, and we had the, we had Bryce here from the safety, Safe Girls School. We had talked about that too at the end.
Look for your hand.
Next time.
Is that it? We all said, all right, middle school, high school, preschool, report, Dave?
All right, on November eleventh, we hosted a Veterans Day luncheon program here. It was hosted here, but all of the Elsco, Elsco district schools collaborated on that. Finders provided, they worked on a little video clip with posters. We had servers from the elementary school. We had choirs and bands from the middle school. High school kids attended and helped. We had a speaker from the, from the high school. Jeremy Jaski spoke. Yeah, so it was a nice collaborative effort. It was nice to see students from both schools gathered for that. And it was great to see veterans. Wonderful to see the veterans and have that opportunity to honor them. Additionally, there's, something happened last year, but it happened again this year, and it was improved, was our freshman leadership presentations. So the freshman teachers collaborated between English and history and social studies. And this year, the difference in those leadership presentations is that the teachers really focused on the skill of research and connecting research to their own thinking and what the impact of what they learned is. So in other words, making connections between the student, the leader, and the research they did on the leaders. And that was really evident in the presentations that they did. Those connections were natural, they were present. And it was really, for me, the ones that I watched, it was really enjoyable to see how those students connected with the leaders that they chose. And they chose leaders across a broad section of our society. And when I say "our society," I mean they were all American-based leadership. I don't remember anybody being an international leader, at least in the presentations that I saw. And, and it was just, they were really well-done, slides were excellent. You could tell they were well-researched. I didn't have a single student read their slides. I mean, they, they were up there, but they really spoke and quite passionately about the leaders that they had researched. So that was a, that was a highlight that I was able to, to observe in our school. And that's all I have.
Sounds great. All right, we'll keep moving. Pathfinder, Venture Academy, and Pack of Pups report. Katie?
So with Pathfinder, we have two students at Pathfinder that are looking to finish by credits at semester. They're on early graduation, which is great. One of our students has applied at Forestville Builders, and the other is doing an internship. And then Lexi is gonna take the kids out pretty much every other week just to give them opportunities to see different career paths. They were at the Ag Center in Manitowoc. They were on a construction site, and they've gone to a couple of different art places. A lot of the kids at Pathfinder are very artsy. So it was really great to get them to different museums. And they're currently working on creating decorations for the holidays. ABA, the Glow Run was really a lot of fun. The kids made over eleven hundred dollars for their trip to Costa Rica, which was awesome. It was more successful than I think of all. Fundraisers are back in February. We definitely learned a lot about, I guess, doing five Ks, but they want to make it an annual thing, so. And look out for that next fall. Kind of like the freshman leadership presentations, our students have to do quarterly learning defenses. So learning defense is they have to take the projects that they did during the first quarter and basically defend their learning to a group of their peers and a panel of advisors. So they go through some of the successes they had, some of the challenges they had, and then they have to grade themselves on the different learning targets that they received. So they either give themselves a developing commission or advanced grade, and then that's what they're defending their presentation on. And then afterwards, the advisors meet with them and go through what they agree with the grade they gave themselves. The peers give constructive feedback, so they all have to, we go through a whole lesson on how to give constructive feedback, because prior to this year, we learned that kids don't really know how to do that. They would write, you know, how was their presentation good? Great, that means nothing, so. And we get always close through on how to get feedback. And then, like I said, they go to the advisors after. And this was probably one of our best learning defense years. The kids were really prepared, they did a really great job, and they were very honest. Like if they get, you know, to their all learned topics done, they gave themselves. So that was great. We had a group of students tour TTX, which was awesome. I've never been there and I got to go along. TTX is amazing. The kids were really fascinated with how each team member kind of has a specific part of the project and how all the parts really come together at the end, but all in one building. And then the kids got to use their cobot, which is a robotic arm that welds. So they got to use the iPad to program it and see how the welds went, which was really, really cool, because we have one student in particular, a girl who's very passionate about welding. And so we let her start out the cobot, and she was like, this is cool, but I really liked welding, so.
Instead of the robot.
Yeah, instead of telling the robot, well, she's like, I just really like to make the pretty design and see what I call, but at the end, so. That was really, really a cool thing for our students to be able to do. And then at Pack of Pups, we are going to be starting with a play therapist for our two through five-year-olds in January. We partnered with DCMC and got a grant through the Greater Green Bay Foundation. And as far as we know, it's the first, it's kind of the state to have a mental health therapist come to the daycare. We have kids with a lot of trauma in our daycare, so I'm very excited to get this started and see how it goes. We also have hearing and vision screening coming in January for our kiddos. And I know Jesse was trying to work with Bridging Brighter Smiles to see if we could get dental in as well, so we can make the daycare more of a one-stop shop for our families. Our kiddos, a lot of times, have adventures with the dentist before they get to four K or five K. So we're just really trying to do more of a comprehensive care for our kids just due to some of the adversity that some of the families have, so.
And you're filling up a little bit?
We are filling up, yeah. It's, when a family comes with three kiddos, three and under, we get blown over a little bit, so. Yeah, we are filling up, so.
Are we completely full or not? No.
Where is your space for the play-based therapy stuff?
It's gonna be in our two-year-old room, so a lot of times the two and threes are combined during the day. So we're gonna use the two-year-old room, because they have a lot of the things and supplies they already want us to have there.
And do you have dates for the ABA open houses that come up for like us to attend?
I'll get those too.
Okay, thanks.
Usually January.
Second weekend anyway.
Okay, yeah, just want to get that on the calendar, as you were talking about Q1 updates.
Yes.
All right, who is going to do Marie's special ed wellness report?
All right, Marie is recovering from surgery, so we wish her well. But her report includes our indoor winter market, which is coming up this Saturday, so a big plug for that. It's from nine to one in the Wellness Center. This is, I think, the second annual indoor market we've had, so. Very well-attended from the community, so we appreciate that. Special ed staffing update, Alletta Yunk returned from her maternity leave. So we're glad to see her back here at the middle school and high school. Big shout-out to a team of para-professionals that worked hard while she was gone, kind of filling in. Speech and language pathologist Ashley Brown will be returning to in-person work following our return in December. We did have a meeting with a contracted person that is going to be filling in when she goes on maternity leave. So we do have a contract for the board to look at tonight for that. And then a big thank you to CISA seven's Lane Fisher for filling in for occupational therapy. CISA seven also hired a new physical therapist that will be starting with us in January second. And we are also looking for a sub, long-term sub, to fill in for a medical leave for a special ed para that will be out for six to eight weeks, starting in mid-December. The Freeze the Gain Wellness Challenge is kicked off today, I believe. It's a competition for staff to kind of put some health-first, I think, initiatives. So there's prizes for those that are able to maintain or lose weight over the holidays, I believe, so. Wayne was today with Nurse Tori. I am not participating. I'm going to enjoy the holidays.
Committee reports, Building Grounds Transportation Committee from October thirtieth.
All right, we met October thirtieth, basically to discuss the grade school gymnasium as far as refinishing and painting. We ended up getting three different quotes. Ultimately, we went with Stalker Sports. We approved that. And then we also discussed a bus that has given us a little bit of trouble. Jessie, I don't know if, do you know where we're at with that?
Yeah, we're still waiting for him to, he's got on his list of buses to fix or soul projects.
They brought, they had brought it to Packer City, but Packer City didn't really want to do it. So they were trying to pedal us off, so we ended up finding a guy that's local that could do it, so. We also saw building plans from Bayland. We looked them over, we saw a few things that we thought should be changed on there, garage doors, width and height, little stuff like that, but hopefully we got back to them on that and they can change that, so. Other than that, that was it for that meeting.
Okay, any questions for everyone? All right, there was also a charter school committee from November thirteenth, since Amy is chair and she's gone. I could read the minutes. Chair Johnson noted the following board members were present. Patrick Byphone and Johnson, Rogers was excused. Also present was Superintendent Brinkman, Governing Board President Gressel, ABA Principal Horn, and ABA Lead Teacher Robinson. Elguma Venture Academy's annual authorization report will be completed by Superintendent Brinkman and sent to DPI and elected officials before the deadline of December fifteenth. The report template is similar to last year. The ABA staff are in the process of creating performance measures post-grant. Data from the FAST bridge is being analyzed to help create the measures. Meetings between the Governance Board and Charter School Board were scheduled for August and May. The committee would like to amend these dates, so the committee meets annually, annual member in June, with the ABA Governance Board. Current enrollment in ABA reflects thirty-five students. This is comparable to enrollment from last school year. An increase in students receiving special education supports has risen this year, which has caused staffing concerns. Six of the thirty-five students are receiving special education services under their individual education plan. The Board of Education will hear recommendations on putting a cap of how many open-enrolled students with special education services can be accepted to ABA in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Billboards have been used to promote ABA in hopes that more open-enrolled students will apply. In addition, a marketing video and radio commercials have been used to advertise. A large junior class will be graduating in two years, so looking to maintain the enrollment numbers will be important in future years. Floor plans of the proposed new ABA space were shared with the committee. And in other business, Superintendent Brinkman shared that the district is looking at a new website, which could impact the current ABA website. And that's, oh, no. Oh, just a portion of the journal, that's pretty much it then. And then last, we had a public relations committee on November fourteenth.
And speaking of the new website, a gentleman by the name of Joshua Riggs from Ed Leo gave a presentation on what they would do for a website included with ADA compliance. Customer success team report to design options. Full-service suit for school communications included a website, content manager, mass messaging, branded mobile app, online payment system. We also looked at a portion of a recorded presentation from CMS for schools. They include a mobile app that can replace school messenger and two options for the creation of a website design were discussed. Jessie, what was the, do you remember what the number of schools in the state that uses CMS?
Probably close to thirty, forty percent, I would say.
Okay. After discussion, it was recommended to bring that CMS for schools to a full board for recommendation based upon the amount of school districts that use it in the state and the significant cost difference between the two. And then also, Jessie relayed to us that a social media campaign about the district to promote and highlight successes, programs, and curriculum was gonna be happening in the near future as well.
I have a few on that one. When it says, like, school messenger is at, like, that class, would you have part of it?
That's our mass notification system.
Okay.
For school closures, updates, and emergencies.
And then app?
Text or email, or both?
Both.
Okay.
And then what about, like, what is it, the app? Is it, that isn't including, like, that, say, Powerschool or anything? That's all gonna be separate yet, or is this all gonna be?
Separate.
That's all gonna be separate yet?
This app would be kind of more of a communication between the website and like a calendar, you can have like a bookmark on your app. And it's, you know, bring out what you want to have notifications for.
Okay.
Lunch menu is a big one.
I didn't know if, like, you know, this other one said to something about payment and stuff like that, like, I didn't know if that's where you upload money for your lunches, that's in a different one compared, you know, when it shows up on Powerschool. I didn't know if that's all kind of together now, or that's all still gonna be separate.
It's still separate.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? All right, was the school board convention January twenty-second, twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five? Everybody's registered? And it sounds, we didn't have any reservations at the Hilton, so we shouldn't.
If you did, you won't.
You might.
We shouldn't be at that point, Dr. Ash. All right, moving on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, the budget hearing minutes of October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, the Building Grounds and Transportation Committee minutes of October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, charter school committee minutes of November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, and the Public Relations Committee many minutes of November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Bonnie and Chris Spanish, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve bills.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Chrissy, second by Chris. Slide, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Paul, motion carries. I need a motion to approve Stalker Sports Floor to sand, refinish, and paint the elementary gym floor during the summer of twenty-twenty-five and leave on twenty thousand nine hundred dollars. Second, motion made by Chris Spanish, second by Chrissy. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the school-based behavior care services contract from Door County Medical Center for play-based therapy at Pack of Pups Childcare.
So moved.
Second.
Motion approved, slide, second by Jeremy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. And I need a motion to approve the contract with CMS for schools in. And I need a motion to approve the contract with CMS for schools in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred dollars for a new website, mobile app and messaging system.
So, I'm sorry, what would you say the amount was?
It's different than what your original thing was.
Correct, yeah, so the addition was incorrect, so the correct amount would be thirteen thousand two hundred, not the fifteen thousand nine hundred.
Which is always nice when it goes down.
It's, it's a good thing.
I'll move.
Second.
Ronnie and Jeremy, all in favor?
Aye, aye, thank you.
All opposed, motion carries, any requests for future agenda items? All right, hearing none, I need a motion to approve, second, session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, subsections one, C and E, for the purpose of personal matters, hires, resignation, signature, evaluation, delivery, and purchase of public property.
So moved.
Chrissy?
Second.
And Chris Spanish, so what about Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Jeremy, and I also say a.